Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. And the first thing we get to do today is honor Beaver Creek's junior ROTC. So would you all please come up here and join me? You don't have to do it in formation, but just come on up and join me. The ones that want the microphone after I'm finished, get close to me. They'll keep going down the other side. All right, a very important asset to the Beaver Creek Community School System, to the Beaver Creek Community as a whole, is the Beaver Creek Air Force Junior ROTC. And this group just happened to jump a huge hurdle up at the state level. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we're going to get a little more details of what's going on. Dear team members and coaches, Beaver Creek High School's Air Force Junior ROTC Drill Team had an impressive 2022-23 season led by Coach Major Melvin Whitlow and Team Commanders Brandon Merrill and Allison Tec-- somebody, Alyssa Tecmar. The team finished first place overall in three out of four local drill meets. Therefore, the team has crowned state champions and best among Ohio's 24 Air Force Programs, affectionately known as the Bombers, which was derived from a B-57 airplane crash. Now, that airplane crash, believe it or not, I was in school that day. It broke out a window when it hit the ground, but that was the only damage that it did to the school. So somebody was watching over all of us. So it goes back a long way. The team wrapped up the regular season by also being crowned regional champions by finishing number one in 14 schools from Illinois, Indiana, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and Ohio. Open Drill Nationals, held at Wright State University's Nutter Center, recognized the best of the best drill teams in Air Force Junior ROTC and consist of regulations, color guard, exhibition, and inspection to showcase their hard work. The Bomber Drill Team competed with teams from all over the United States and Germany. In the Armed Division, they finished first of 20 teams, considered the best in the Air Force, and the Unarmed Division came in third of 22 teams. These accomplishments speak volumes about the dedication of these cadets, as well as their parents' involvement. So a round of applause for these cadets. Sir, I'd like to turn this over to you to expand just a hair.
Well, sir, you put me on the spot here. I just want to say congratulations to our drill team. Lots of hard work, five, six months of early morning practices. We open the doors at 6:15 a.m., and they get after it when they come in in the morning. So the results speak for themselves. I appreciate their dedication and the responsiveness to coaching. Want to thank the parents for their support, and most importantly, to the city for acknowledging the cadets' hard work. Lots of work goes on behind the scenes, but we do appreciate the acknowledgement, and thank you guys for celebrating with us.
Thank you, and I'm going to give you this letter, and hopefully you'll display it proudly. And does anybody in the group wish to make a comment? Now, there's bound to be one. Somebody just say yes. All right, future leader, please step forward.
I just want to say thank you for the recognition. Normally, not many JROTCs are invited to city halls and meetings, you know, very important such as this, and it really is just like a proud moment for all of the team. And I can speak for everyone and myself here that it's a very proud moment and something that will be, you know, long-lived in our memories here from high school. This is really great to be here and experience this, and really thankful to be recognized. You know, we all put in hard work, you know? Each and every one of us can say that, and we're just glad, you know, to be recognized. We don't go out there, you know, every morning practicing and putting out all that work on the drill floor just to be here, you know? This isn't something that, you know, we expect, but it's just something that I guess that's nice. And we want to say thank you to everyone that recognized this and for the award. So, thank you.
Very well said. We're going to get some pictures here. Is that what we wanted to get? You know, today, by no coincidence, is Military Appreciation Month, the month of May. Thank you very much, unless anybody else has something to say. Go Creek! All right, very good. Thank you very much. I think we've just about cleared the room. All right, chief, if you and your captains could join us up here, please. His door's locked. All right, it's my pleasure to be able to read the proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress of the United States has designated May 15th of each year to be the Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls within National Police Week being observed May 14th through 20th, 2023. And whereas the members of the Beaver Creek Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Beaver Creek. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property and protecting them against violence and disorder, protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Beaver Creek Police Department has grown to be a modern and nationally accredited law enforcement agency, and that the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, proclaim the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in the City of Beaver Creek. Chief, I will present this to you, please. And we certainly, it is a real pleasure to do this today, especially after what happened on Tuesday. It was such a pleasure for the levy to pass. So I'm going to give you the microphone, too.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to council, and thank you to our community, most of all. Each year when we get up here to do this, it's an honor and privilege to be here. As the mayor read, service to our community. We are servants. That's what we do. It's what we're called to do. We sign up to do this when we take our oath, and it's a privilege and honor to just simply be here and accept this on behalf of the agency. I do have command staff with me and an officer with me that's able to kind of got busy here right at the beginning of the meeting. It's the busy time of our day typically, but this is an honor, sir, and we just thank you so much, and it's a privilege to, again, to be here. And it is a somber time, and for any of us, some of us have attended the National Peace Officer Memorial Service in Washington, D.C. on the 15th. It's a very sobering time. It's a reminder of the sacrifices that we do make on a daily basis serving our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And I turn it over to Councilmember Schwartz.
For the flesh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all could remain standing for just a moment of silence, as we discussed earlier in the meeting, this is National Law Enforcement Week, and it's also National Police Officers' Memorial Day on May 15th. As the chief so eloquently put it, they are all, all these officers are making a tremendous sacrifice. They are public servants, and some of those have unfortunately had to make the ultimate sacrifice. And so this year in 2023, there are going to be 556 officers that have been inducted into the, are placed on the wall of a memorial in honoring them because they were killed in the line of duty. Of that 556, 224 were killed in 2022. So if all of you could just please take a moment of silence to remember those officers, keep their families in your thoughts and prayers, as well as the officers who are serving not only this community but across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. It's submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a set of minutes from April 24th, the regular meeting minutes. Anything to add?
Move to approve regular meeting minutes from April 24th, 2023.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from April 24th, the regular meeting, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Abstentions? I guess everybody was here. All right, we'll move on. We've got a pre-scheduled speaker. Mr. Mark Wiley is going to talk to us tonight. How you doing this evening?
I'm doing well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And my name is Mark Wiley. I'm the president of the Beaver Creek Historical Society. I'm here with Mary Jean Henry, our secretary, Mary Jean, and I want to thank the City of Beaver Creek, the council, and the community at large for supporting us as we went through a troubled time when our barn at Wordinger Park was completely destroyed by the tornadoes a few years ago. I'm sure you all remember that. But what I want to update you on, and what I want to make you aware of, is what we've done since then and what we continue to do today. So if you can check the picture there, you'll see that the barn's been fully restored. It is actually a very near replica of what was there before. Mr. Zimmer, the former owner of the barn, when he walked in and saw it, said, "Oh, my gosh, the barn's back." So it was really, really a nice replica, and so far, it's worked out really well for us. And as you can see, we're back in full swing with our main operation, which is to educate third graders in Beaver Creek in our Living History Program. I'll let you know that I am actually the gardening person this year, so I'll be doing that tomorrow morning, too, if anybody would like to join us. So the children here, as you see, are in period dress. They're actually using tablets, huh? A different kind of tablet. But it takes them back to the time of our founding of this community, and I think it's a real benefit to them, and it fulfills their requirement, their third grade requirement for local history. So we have over 600 third graders from all the Beaver Creek schools, as well as St. Luke's Elementary each and every year. Since the mid-1990s, we've had over 15,000 children go through our program. You also see, that's the project that I do, the gardening demonstration. The kids take place, and they really get a flavor for what life was like in 1800, when the first European founders came here to Beaver Creek. And I think it's important to establish that with the younger community so that they realize where we've come from. You know, we have a wonderful city with all these modern amenities, but, you know, when they're reminded that there was no Kroger to go to to find food, it's a real shock for them, but they really enjoy it, and it's a lot of fun and entertainment for us. Also, another major program that we conducted at the barn, and that's a good interior shot of the barn, is the winner welcome. This year, we had over 600 participants come to the winner welcome. I don't know if any of you got a chance to make it over there, but I'll tell you, the parks staff did an excellent job. They spent some of their own personal time and dollars, I believe, buying some of the decorations and putting them up in the barn, and it was a lot of fun. You know, there's a lot of community involvement, and I feel very strongly that, you know, Wordinger Park and the barn in particular are a real gem in the rough, something that we can develop over time and something that we want to add to. We want to develop it into more of a self-sustaining operation. In order to do that, we feel like what we need to do is add on to the barn, and you'll see in this drawing here, in the existing barn, we propose adding two restrooms and a catering support portion to the barn. If you look there to the right, you'll see that darkened portion, that's the add-on. So it will facilitate the public. It'll be ADA compliant. We do have it designed by a professional architect, so we're at least at that point. But where we are now is, and this is exterior view, the elevation's looking at the barn with the restrooms added on, and you can see it maintains the historic look of the barn, keeps the aesthetic that we're looking for, and yeah, Pete, if you can, right there is where those restrooms would be added on. So it's really hard to discern between what was there originally and what we would come away with at the end. Finally, I know that the city has set a goal to add restrooms to as many, I think, of the parks as possible, and I think this is one that needs to be in that line. We, the Historical Society, have partnered with the city since the early, since the mid-1990s, and we've had a wonderful relationship, and I think we can continue that by adding these restrooms on to the barn. I think it'll be a much more attractive site for rental. It'll drive some revenue to help sustain the park over time, and I think that's something that we want to try to establish through our efforts and our operations at the park. We are going to kick off a rededication to the barn on July 23rd at 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Of course, you are all invited. It'll be an ice cream social, so I know Bob will be there. Be available to the public. Our target fundraising goal is $170,000. To date, we've raised over $35,000. In addition to that, we have an anonymous donor who's committed another $40,000, dollar for dollar, up to $40,000, to match additional local donations. So my purpose here today was to make the public aware of this and let you know that we're kicking this off. We're looking for your support whenever you can offer it. Also, one other thing, I know we're going into probably our budgeting cycle. We usually provide information to the parks for that purpose, for the parks, so you'll probably see some recommendations for us for additional funding for the park as well. So with that, that's what I wanted to get across this evening, and I really appreciate your time and attention today. Thank you.
We appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Public hearings, we have zoning code changes. No, it's ordinance 2310.
Ordinance 2310, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council amending Chapter 158, the zoning code of the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, the BCO, by repealing Sections 158.003 definitions, 158.147 prohibited permanent and temporary signs, and 158.159 electronic variable message signs or digital billboards, and enacting new Sections 158.003 definitions, 158.147 prohibited permanent and temporary signs, and 158.159 electronic variable message signs or digital billboards to modify regulations regarding signage in the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
That's a long intro.
It is. You're going to be more brief, right?
I don't have as much to say as the clerk. Now, the case you have before you is PC 23-5 with the attached ordinance 2310, and as council knows, there's been a moratorium on digital billboards since there was some disagreement between a potential applicant and the city staff on what constitutes an electronic billboard, where they can place it, and ultimately, that went into the court system. It's now out of the court system, and that process has been complete, so we wanted to let the moratorium expire, but before we can do that, we want to get regulations in the zoning code as it pertains to electronic billboards, digital billboards. So the legislation, the proposed legislation you have before you actually strikes out the digital billboard section and allows the existing two billboards that are on 35 to be remained as grandfathered, but then no additional digital billboards to be allowed in the city. And also, there was some definitions in there added in just because we want to clarify what is a digital billboard, what's a digital message, what's the commercial message, what's the non-commercial message, just, and this is all based on the advice of our law director in terms of what we needed to add in to make sure that we can shore that up and try to eliminate confusion and similar issues going forward. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the city's request at their last planning commission meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have following the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Mr. McHugh has indicated that he had a comment or two he'd like to add.
Yes, just very briefly is that in looking through this, you know, every time you read it, you pick up things you want to change. So in looking through this afternoon and looking at our definition of electronic variable message sign, which I'm referring to page 33 and page 34 of the agenda, there's a rough, there is a definition that includes, we also refer to shutter-style signs as electronic, so really one and same. They're called different things, but effectively, there's electronic variable message sign, a shutter-style sign, or a digital billboard. And in the probation on 34, 33, excuse me, number 19, I want to break that apart into billboards, 20, and then I'm going to add some language with respect to the three types of electronic signs to make sure we pick up every version that we call in our definition. And same thing on the page 34, up at the top of 158.159. So I'm going to revise that when it comes for council on the second reading. These aren't going to be substantial changes, but just have council substitute some wording on those two pages, those two sections.
So you don't need amendment tonight?
No, no, because I don't have all the language. I want to work with Randy and make sure we cover that. No, it's no, no, because it's going to pick up exactly what's in our current code anyway.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this ordinance? If there is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public input. And council input. Mr. Curran, anything? Councilman Schwartz, anything?
No, sir.
Anything over here, please?
I have several questions, maybe just clarification, because I read the whole thing a few times, and maybe just like Mr. McHugh said, every time I read it, I picked something up, and so perhaps you can just clarify for me.
Sure.
The difference between a digital billboard and a variable message sign, or is there any?
No, that's just another way of saying, it's, they're called both. They interchange, so it's an interchangeable term.
So are we just prohibiting billboard-sized digital message signs? The billboard size is, you know, 150 square feet and higher than seven feet.
No, we're prohibiting billboards, but to address your question, one of the changes also is that where we say electronic variable message signs or digital billboards, it really, what I want to change, that or should be and, because they are effectively one in the sense, so it should be digital billboard, shutter signs, and digital billboards.
Shutter style.
Electronic variable, shutter style, and digital, so that they really are one in the same.
So a digital message sign of any size is going to be prohibited according to the language?
No, this came up before, at, there are electronic changeable copy signs, which are like if you, or any church, you know, where they got the small messages, that's, those are allowed to be on ground signs, and they're allowed to be up to 50 square, or 50% of the ground sign. Those won't be affected by this.
Okay.
So like what you see at Walgreens or any of the...
Walgreens, churches.
Yeah, anywhere that they have those.
Primrose School, the mall.
Yeah, stuff that we have, like the...
Senior Center.
Yeah, the Creek Station.
Beaver Creek Station.
Those aren't digital billboards, those are electronic changeable copy signs.
Okay, so there is a...
They're defined differently. I mean, there's a definition for those. That's a different sign.
Okay. Okay. I think that was the biggest question mark I had then, was all of those little signs all over the place are still going to be allowed.
Yes, they will.
Councilmember Doer, you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the attention to detail. Yeah, I think very good information. My question pertains to another section of the zoning code that's related to the last case, and that's a definition of a highway. And is there any plan to address that? Because there were some changes on 675 and 35 that were struck out, and it was, it played into the case. And so I don't know if all of this supersedes that definition of highway. I was trying to figure that out in my reading, whether we need to go back and kind of reinstall the language they had prior, or maybe something different.
This, the strikeout of that section, really, the reason where the definition of, or the lack thereof came into play is because we said highway in the regulation saying that you can put it on a highway. We're now eliminating the ability to put it in at all, so highway or no highway, it doesn't matter. Yeah, even the state, that was one of the concerns when it first came up, because even the state doesn't define highway. We couldn't find the state of Ohio with the actual definition of what is a highway, basically any street, so we can have an internal definition of highway as it pertains to our thoroughfare plan when we go to amend that. And usually, the definitions of streets cul-de-sacs, arterials that we have in the zoning code is just a cut and paste from the thoroughfare plan, so that all our language matches up. But we don't define highway anywhere that I could find.
The thing I would suggest, though, too, is that there, the city also has an ongoing project to revise really the zoning code, and that would be something that could be addressed in that. So sometime this summer, there'll be an additional, more general zoning code changes.
Yeah, I'll be at the next work session, I'll have, I've got a, the entire, similar to just this, but it's the rest of the zoning code. So, you know, we can look at adding that into it before we get to the next work session.
Yeah, I'm comfortable that this locks it, but I think that was the piece from the last time that still was left open-ended to me. So appreciate your willingness to look at it.
One more question.
Certainly.
I understand we're grand fathering the existing digital billboards.
When technology improves and the, or the digital billboards that are existing now break, and they need to be replaced, how are we going to address that?
If it's over more than 60% of the value, like if they have to, if it, just a general, general number to say the value is $2 million, and what they want to replace costs 1.8 million, then it's, they're not just fixing it, they're replacing it completely. But if it was $100,000 fix on a $2 million billboard, then that, that's okay. So it's, once the repairs cost over 60% of the value, then you're actually replacing it, not repairing it.
So we won't allow them to replace, replace what they have?
Right. They can maintain, and we want them to maintain and keep it looking good. But they can't add on to, they can't expand it, and they can't, you know, tear it down and build a new one.
Again, though, that, the concept of non-conforming applies to a non-conforming building, a non-conforming use. You know, if something is destroyed and it's non-conforming, then it needs to be constructed according to current code. So...
Yeah, that would happen with a shed or a house.
I understand that. I was just thinking of, you know, if technology were to improve, and the sign that they've got is energy efficient, and they've got some latest technology that we may have never thought of yet, and they want to replace the sign face with this new technology.
And depending on, you know...
Depending on the cost is how we would evaluate that.
And it would be, it would be the value of the sign, not just what they built it for 30 or 10 years prior or whatever. So it'd be a current value. So if, I mean, if it's falling apart and would have to replace the whole foundation and all the site, all that, yeah, no, that wouldn't work. But if it's just a new screen, new, more energy efficient screen or something, like you said, a technology we don't know of, then I would see that as a repair or a upgrade rather than a replacement.
But it all depends on the price.
Does the, does the code define the difference between a repair or an upgrade?
It defines what, when a non-conformity can be replaced, or when a, when a non-conformity, yeah, when a non-conformity can be replaced, if it's less than, if it's over six, or less than 60% of the value.
Okay.
Do we use an inflationary factor on that?
We would take that on a case-by-case basis, really. I mean, it doesn't happen so often. So we would kind of look at it as a, on an individual basis. But, yeah, I mean, if, if, like, if they had to replace everything but the bones of the sign, then I would say that that's not a repair, that's a replacement. But it's, if they were just replacing a screen and it didn't, I mean, it looked exactly like it did before, it's just more energy efficient. I mean, that would be a upgrade.
Anything in the city, regardless whether a sign or a house or business, if it take, if it's damaged by fire or whatever, whatever, and it takes more than 60%, it's, it can't be done. It has to start over. That's the non-conform, and it's non-conforming. And that building inspection is much the same way. If your house is damaged more than 60%, you start with the new codes, start all over again.
One caveat, you'll see what the next round is to add it and make it even more confusing. It's that if it's in the flood plain and it floods, because we want to match up with FEMA rather than the zoning code, it's 50% more for flood-related stuff. But trying to match apples and oranges and make them fit in the same box, so.
Yeah, Councilman Bales asked a question I was concerned with, and that was, I didn't, I was confused as to what signs it really meant. It doesn't mean every digital sign that's out there, but you answered that, so.
Yeah, no, we don't want to, we have no intention of getting rid of those. I mean, those are very useful, and they actually last and look a lot longer than the predecessor of the, somebody sticking letters out on, you know, the changeable copy, manual changeable copy, so.
But thank you for the clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else, anything? Everybody ready? You good? All right, no other input. Is there an ordinance, is there a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 23-10 to the second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-10 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-11.
Ordinance 23-11 to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, and to amend ordinances 23-06 and 22-32.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is just a supplemental appropriations to certify some additional revenue that came in. Some of these are timing issues, some are just unfortunate accidents that we don't anticipate in the budget and just have to account for them. So the first one is the police levy fund. We had a vehicle that ran into a wall, I believe, and we submitted that through our insurance, receiving the money. And now it's time to pay the vendor that fixed the vehicle itself. So in that case, we have to certify the revenue of the insurance proceeds coming in and then appropriate the expenditure for the repair of the vehicle. The second one is a little unusual. It was a class action suit by Monsanto. And this dated back to 2016, so it's a long time been coming. And they finally settled, and they gave it out based on mediciaries and government entities that utilized that particular product that the lawsuit was over. We received $17,414 of that class action suit. And we isolated it down to, it was probably used by, that product was used by streets and for the Parks Department for weed control, that type of thing. So we took that money, and we need to certify that to bring it into the city for potential uses. We don't really have any potential uses right now for it. So we're going to just certify it and make it available out there for parks or streets if they need that for continued maintenance. And still under the street levy, we actually had with the Sheetz location on Colonel Glenn Highway, there had to be a traffic study completed, and they agreed to pay for that. But again, we have to certify that reimbursement coming in and appropriate that expenditure for that traffic study as part of that new development. In the park levy fund, we actually budgeted $5,000 for a grant from Greene County hearing on aging. And at the time, we knew we were going to apply for the grant. We put that in the budget, but we didn't know what we were going to spend it on at that point. So we didn't put that in. Since then, the department has figured out what they wanted to buy for the senior center, and they're going to go ahead and do that. So what we need to do is appropriate the expenditures related to those improvements. And in case everybody wanted to know, it's a barbell stand, some barbell bumper plates, some new tables for the classrooms, and medical grade steps for the transportation van. And that ought to take care of the majority of that money. Then the good news is on the second parcel land that we bought for the spring house, you recall that was last year we purchased that. We had in the budget for the purchase, and we had in the budget for the reimbursement from the Land and Water Conservation Fund as part of that grant. Unfortunately, it took them a little longer to get us that reimbursement. We didn't rebudget that. So again, we had the expenditure last year. We didn't get the revenue, the reimbursable grant in there. So we have to certify that to bring it in. And if you recall, part of that transaction was that that committed park fund didn't have the funds to buy that land. And we knew we wanted to take it out of that for current and future tracking purposes. So the general fund actually advanced that fund some additional money to make that purchase. And with the money coming in, and once we have that certified, we can then advance back the money that we borrowed from the general fund in order to make that transaction. So that's the other part of that process. It's kind of an in and out of the committed parks and then repaying the general fund. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Apples and oranges, you don't want to mix them.
Apples and oranges.
Well, you're trying to keep everything separate.
That's right.
Yeah. All right, anybody have any questions? All right. Do I hear, hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, this is an ordinance. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. I'll accept a motion, please.
Move we approve 23-11 ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-11.
Roll call.
I need a roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Mayor Scott.
Yes, thank you. Next is Resolution 23-28.
Resolution 23-28, a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a letter on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek stating that city council does not oppose the transfer of the proposed liquor license from Amber Oaks Operating Group LLC to TP Dayton LLC.
Thank you. Chief, you want to start off on this one, please?
Yes, Mayor, I will, and I'll let Mr. McHugh finish up. As the clerk mentioned, we did receive from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control notification of a request regarding the transfer of a class D5 liquor permit from Amber Oaks Operations Group out of Sheffield Lake, Ohio, to the TP Dayton LLC group, which is located at 2661 Fairfield Commons here in the city. This transfer is an economic development transfer which the state labels as a Trex, and that's noted by the Division of Liquor Control in supporting documents. Now, higher revised code 430329 states that a liquor permit may be transferred to a different owner at a different location in a different municipal corporation. This ORC section also states that the transfer of ownership and location of the permit may occur if the municipal corporation acknowledges in writing to the Division of Liquor Control that the transfer will be for an economic development project. And we're recommending this request move forward, giving the city manager the authority to sign that document. And I'll let Mr. McHugh clarify.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Mayor and council, initially, when this came forward, there was some concern with respect to it because the attorney's, the initial letter, I'm not sure it was in the packet, but it originally said it was for purposes of accounting. I talked to him, and you also have a letter from him. But, and talked to him, what, what really occurred here, it's unfortunate, but as, I think some of it was a factor of COVID because the liquor control people were all working from home. And what they originally, when they filed this, they were told that they were in the economic development, the entertainment district for the mall, which then would have allowed them to obtain a DJ, a D5J, which would be a full service, effectively a D5. The problem is, they proceeded, they did this $2 million investment, you know, they're approximately 70 employees. And at that point, at the last minute, they were, they were advised by the bureau that, oops, it's not in that district, therefore you, we can't issue that permit, which they couldn't. So what the liquor department did was, the state gave them was the D5I. But D5I has some kind of quirky provisions. And, you know, in talking to him, he said that they probably never would have invested the $2 million if they couldn't, if they knew they were not really going to get a liquor permit that really allowed them to operate. One of the problems with the D5I is that you have to take all those counting records. Also requires that you have to, that no more than 25% of your sales, excluding wine, can be from liquor sales. And that, that's a, that's a big problem for the, for their type of operation. And so as a result, they had to go hunting around for a D5, which is really what they wanted, which they would have applied for and would have probably done a truck transfer before they ever opened, but for the fact that they thought they were in this entertainment district. So as a result of all that, that's why, you know, they go ahead. They opened last year, and now they finally did get a D5 transfer out from another city and another business, and that's why they're doing this. So, you know, in looking at it, I do think the intent is that it meets the criteria of the statute. And really, in talking to him, I think there was definitely some, probably miscues unfortunate from the state that sort of misled them in one direction, only at the last minute to determine that unfortunately it didn't work. But, I mean, the state at least gave them, came up with a version of a license, but it really wasn't what they wanted. And I think from the get-go, they've known that they would have to go find a license, and that's what they're doing.
All right, so we have a resolution. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 23-28.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Decision item, first quarter financial.
First off, I'd like to apologize for getting that out to you today. We had a tough time getting everything closed out for the quarter, but we're back on track. Just a couple of things to highlight. Again, property taxes are number one source of revenue, up a little bit, more than even the county auditor projected, so that's a good thing. It's not a lot, but it's, it's always better that it comes in to his conservative estimate a little bit higher than what he was projecting. Couple of things that are really noteworthy are the interest revenue. We had budgeted $90,000 and, for the year. And when the interest rates started spiking, the one benefit of that is that our investments now in Star Ohio are picking up over 5%. So not only have we exceeded that budget for the quarter, I just looked at the statement we just got for April, and it was the same amount as our budget. So we're accumulating some nice interest earnings on that. We also called the bank and said, by the way, we've got some money in the bank. What are you guys doing for us as far as interest rates go? And they were kind enough to meet with us and extend their credit a little bit to us and give us a lot higher interest rate than they had previously contracted to give us. So again, we shook them down a little bit for some additional money. The golf course, they had...
I like his energy.
The golf course had a, you know, again, February and March were exceptional. There was nice weather out there. The golfers love to come out. Even when it's cold, they don't really care. They're just out there anyway. And so we did already 2,000 rounds through March, which was about 939 rounds more than the last year, which was almost a record year. So again, as long as the weather holds up, and then April got, you know, rainy and wet and sort of tempered that a little bit, but that's always encouraging to see out there. The rest of it, everything else is running on budget, and everything's looking pretty good. So just wanted to give you the highlights.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Motion to accept the first quarter financial report?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the first quarter financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're down to council time. I bet we start over on my left, Councilmember Kern. You have anything you'd like to mention tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. Had the opportunity to participate in the National Day of Prayer. Two events, one was at the 9/11 memorial, and that was a very nice event. K. Bond, who's chaired that event for some time, was present. And WFCJ had that on the radio. And that evening, I had the opportunity to attend the Beaver Creek Church. And I think that's, Councilmember Adams is church, Beaver Creek Christian. And they had a nice program. Want to congratulate particularly Councilmember Doer. He prayed for government and just did an excellent job. I thought it was an excellent presentation. Also attended the Beaver Creek Women's League, their annual fundraiser, which they raise money for young ladies to be able to pursue college career activities. And also... And also to participate in the senior citizens' mother's tea, that was fun, always is, with your efforts there to move the water and the coffee and all the other things. And then, of course, we don't want to leave out the mayor's event every month, and he had a large crowd there, Your Honor, and it was really interesting to see, of course, Paws focused as well as many, many others. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend the Green County Annual Report with Councilmember Bales this past Friday morning. It was great to see all of the city leaders there, the county leaders there, but I think the two main takeaways, and I'm sure Councilmember Bales will probably hit on these as well, is that the city of Beaver Creek continues to be an economic development driver in the, in Green County, and we've led in both commercial and residential construction development. So I think that's something to be proud of. Additionally, the unemployment rates continue to decline, which is wonderful, and we still remain lower than the state average. So both of those statistics were great news for the city of Beaver Creek, and good to be able to see all of the development going on within the county itself. I was also able to attend the Ohio Region 14 meeting for the opioid epidemic. During that meeting, I was appointed as the, as an executive committee member to represent the city of Beaver Creek. Right now, the regional committee is very much in its infancy, and so we're just doing a lot of development, trying to figure out how we're going to do the funding allocation formula, what projects we're going to select, and establishing conflict of interest and ethics policies to kind of just run that region. So it's, like I said, very much in its infancy, but more to come. We have another meeting next month, and so expect another report at that time. I also wanted to thank the mayor for extending the invite to his first Thursday. It was great to see four Paws. I was unable to go to the Chamber of Commerce event, so it was good to hear more about them. And last, but certainly not least, I want to thank all of our residents for their support for the police levy and the school levy. Both of those levies, I understand, you know, can kind of have an impact on each of us as residents in paying property taxes, however, they're extraordinarily important, and if we want to remain in a very safe community, it's important that we invest in our police force and in our schools. So I want to thank our residents, I was very excited to see both of those issues pass. That's all I have. Oh, wait, actually, I don't. One more thing, I'm sorry. I get to do the employee anniversaries for me.
Good for you.
So, as most of you know, every month we like to recognize our employee anniversaries, so this month we have quite a few. We have Doug Seaton with Parks and Rec, 23 years of service, Kim Farrell with Parks and Rec, 15 years, Heather Jolly with Police, 20, Jason Kleimer with Parks and Rec, nine years, Cole Dortson, public service, four, Mark Dietz, public service, one, Robbie Maxwell, public service, eight, Lenore Tivon, public service, one, Will Begley, engineering, one, and Faith Lammer, police, 25. So thank you for your service to our community, we greatly appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Bales?
Well, thank you, Mayor. It was my pleasure to attend the MVRPC Annual Banquet with many of you last week. They put on a very nice event and showcased some important people throughout our region who have really made an impact on local governments and parks, and really appreciated that. I was able to attend the MVRPC Board of Directors meeting last week as well. There was a large presentation regarding the PFAS issues at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base and the couple of major projects that they're taking on to combat those and measure the outfalls in the Mad River. And so I'm sure we'll continue to hear more about that as those projects continue. With Councilwoman Schwartz, I went to the Green County Community Improvement Annual Report to the Community. I want to congratulate Larry Connor, who was presented with the EJ Nutter Award for his instrumental work in the county and primarily in the Bel Brook region. They produced a nice booklet I gave to everybody, and as was stated, you know, we had in 2022, in Beaver Creek, city only, $30 million worth of residential valuation, construction, and over $100 million in commercial. So they, we are just cranking it out compared to the rest of the county, and many of the areas of the rest of the county are doing quite well as well. So we see a lot of good growth in our community. Tax revenues are up, we're seeing residential and commercial construction close to pre-pandemic levels. Also included in this booklet is convention and visitors bureau numbers on their growth and hotel nights and, and tourism in the community. And again, in 2022, we're very, very close to pre-pandemic numbers as well. So I think this year we will surpass what was their previous record high in 2019, and so, good stuff. Did attend the Water and Wastewater Advisory Board meeting. They are getting very close to one-stop permitting for the county, so anyone interested in filling out a building permit can do that easily online. They're hoping to have that operational by the end of the year, and they would keep us in the loop on that. Their Consumer Confidence Report for 2022 will be published by July 1st, and they are doing unidirectional hydrant flushing, so, right now. So be aware, if you see some discoloration in your water, more than likely nothing to be alarmed about because it's important that they flush those water lines regularly. A couple of big projects, multimillion dollar projects that they're working on, is they are getting ready to continue the development of a new well field on Hilltop Road, and then the big softening project, which is like a $45 million softening project, that is continuing on schedule. So again, I think we'll see some real benefit to the Beaver Creek community when they get those two projects finished. I attended the Golf Advisory Board last week. The advisory board passed some new bylaws for the board. Big thing to note is they're expanding the number of people who can serve on the board from five to seven, and so anyone who's watching and is interested in that can contact either Steve Click or Human Resources and fill out a volunteer application form for that. We had a cool day for Arbor Day at Shaw School, but we did get a tree planted with many children who were very, very excited to shake the mayor's hand, so that was fantastic. I also enjoyed the Mother's Day Tea at the Senior Center. We had a ball, serving a room full of...
Over 100.
Many mothers. I was also a very proud sponsor of the Beaver Creek Women's League Annual Scholarship Luncheon this weekend. And one other thing, besides, thanks for the levy support, obviously, but speaking of, of funding, the Popcorn Festival Committee made a presentation to us a few months ago about their electric problem on Dayton-Zenia Road. And Shannon Graham called me a week ago or so, and he asked if I knew of any more grant funding sources for him. I gave him a couple of ideas, but one of them that really popped into my head was Green County Community Investment Grant. It's run by the Department of Development, and they focus on Main Street projects, and Dayton-Zenia Road, in my opinion, is definitely a Main Street. And so I actually talked with Eric Henry at Green County, and he has encouraged the Popcorn Festival Committee to apply for a grant to upgrade that electric. What I'm thinking, though, is that there may have to be a city component to that, maybe we endorse the project. I'm not asking for a financial commitment from the, from the city, but if there needs to be a city component to that, I would strongly encourage us to think about that. If we could get some county money to improve the electric so that we could continue our popcorn festival, I think that would be fantastic.
I do too.
That is all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Major Melvin Whitlow for bringing the junior ROTC to council today and for the development of an excellent program that's increasingly successful, so great to see them. Thank you to everyone that voted, and to echo Councilwoman Schwartz's comments, just thank you for your support, but appreciate the attention to the levy and what it means in the community, so thank you. With the presentation from the Beaver Creek Historical Society, it hit home because we have a son in third grade who just, in the last couple of weeks, got to go there and came home knowing how to sew a little bit better and with some butter that he made, that he made, so it was really, really an amazing program. My, my wife was a chaperone as well, so got to see it up front as well, so...
I noticed the hem is coming out of my suit jacket, so I'll send that home with you then.
Yep. Yep.
Speechless.
I can't do it personally all that well. I can sew a little bit, but not well. For the National Day of Prayer, had the opportunity to lead it in Cedarville, Ohio, and then thankful for Mrs. Toni Wright and the service at Beaver Creek Christian Church, and the opportunity to pray there. Alongside Councilmember Adams, we had the opportunity to eat lunch at McAllister's for the Chamber of Commerce, and it's a really nice program where we eat lunch at a member of the Chamber of Commerce and have an opportunity to network and to build their businesses, so a working lunch for the two of us, yes. I too attended Mayor's first Thursday, so as usual, wonderful event and great to see Paws for ability, see their dogs regularly throughout the county, and just a great program. And finally, Mayor, congratulations on your 50th anniversary.
Yes.
For you and Mrs. Stone.
Congratulate my wife, please. All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, sir. First, I want to thank the citizens of Beaver Creek for passing the police levy. I know it was the second time up, and we really appreciate the fact that they saw the need and met that, and it's kind of appropriate that we celebrate National Peace Officer Week this coming week, coincides, it's, it's good to see that. Congratulations, Junior ROTC, on all their accomplishments this year. They did, all that became national champions in, in three years of existence, so they've worked really hard over there. I also attended the MVRPC Spring Dinner at Carolan Park with several people here on council. It was a great event, they did a really nice job and recognized some people that really deserve recognition, so. And then several of us attended the Arbor Day Celebration at Shaw School, where the Tree Board and the Parks Department planted a tree and talked to the second graders about the importance of trees, and I know that all the little second graders there got to shake Mayor Stone's hand, and I think there's several of them probably still haven't washed that hand, said, "I'm never going to wash it again."
That's what I'd say.
I was able to attend the retirement party for Alex Aharef, Beaver Creek Township... Administrator, that's right. I keep getting all those words mixed up, but he's going to be missed. I think Ryan Rushing will do a good job of that, and I wish Alex well in his next endeavor. I also attended the Family Violence Prevention Center Spring Fling, it's their national, their largest fundraiser of the year. That was a great activity, and it, they raised a lot of money that night, so, which is really good for them. I was able to attend the Midstates Regional Conference for Green Bucks. They gave away 11 bikes that day, nine of them to special needs kids and two to special needs veterans. And if you've never been, seen that happen, it's well worth the time and effort to go see that. Watching the smiles on these people's faces when they realize now they can go out and be with their peers and get around and do things is, it's an amazing thing. I also attended the National Day of Prayer service at Beaver Creek Christian Church, and thank you to Councilman Duer, he did a great job praying for the government officials. Mother's Day Tea at Senior Center, it's, it's an amazing event to serve those ladies and talk to them, it's, it was a real pleasure. I know several of us on council here were there, Councilman Bales, Councilman Kern, Mayor Stone, it was, it was a good event. This past Saturday, I was able to attend the national, or naturalization ceremony at Green County Fairgrounds. I'd never been to one of these before, but there were 102 people from 46, or excuse me, 62 different countries that were naturalized as US citizens, and to watch that ceremony is an amazing thing. They went through the whole process, and I think there's, if you think about it, they have to answer a, or take a test with 20 questions on it, and I don't know that all of us can actually pass that test right now. I also attended and sponsored the Beaver Creek Women's League Scholarship Luncheon, and they gave out several scholarships to some local high school young ladies. One of them, as a matter of fact, had a 4.7 GPA, and she already has 74 hours of college completed, and she graduates from high school in two weeks. So it's amazing, just... And finally, I was able to attend the Beaver Creek Schools Fun Day at the high school this past Sunday, was able to take my great grandkids over there. It was a lot of fun, we had to leave early because it was a little too warm for them, but the weather was much, much better this year than it was last year when they blew all the tents away, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So just a couple of updates. So I know a few weeks ago when we came back from the DDC fly-in, I presented some action items that I wanted to work on, and I just want to give an update on those. So this past week, Mr. McHugh and I were able to attend a conference call with an attorney from Whiten Case regarding CFIUS, and one of the things we talked about is how practically could this work in a city of our size, being so close to the base, and understanding the rules of CFIUS and what that means, how would that even apply to a city or a zoning code? So we had a really good conversation with him, he's going to work with us on some draft language that could be implemented in zoning, but also practically what it means once the language is in place. He's incredibly excited to work with us on this because we would be the first city in the country to have any type of language like this in our zoning code. So not just the first, close to a base, or an air force base, or a different denominational base, but it's all very much the first city in the country. So we're working with him to see what we can do and how that would work in practice. The other thing I talked about too was, you know, being so close, what it means to be a defense city is one of the presentations we had, we heard from a senior military spouse, and one of the things she talked about is what it means to move and what everyone's looking for. So Katie very quickly put together a new section on our website to welcome new residents, and it has links of what a new resident would need, whether you're coming from the military move or whether you're coming from another state, and it has links to the local state schools, it has links to the local volunteer organizations, it has different things that you can look at to really get involved in our city and become part of our community right away. So thank you to Katie for putting that together, you're always awesome, and that was just so quick that you put that together for us. But just a couple of things that I wanted to work on that we took away from the DDC fly-in, among other things, but at least some action items that we had that we've taken care of, which I think was great. Also, congratulations to the junior ROTC members, I'm always fascinated by these young individuals, and the young gentleman that spoke tonight was great, he was very well spoken, and I loved what he had to say, so that's great to see. I also attended the MVRPC Spring Banquet, which was really nice, and Arbor Day, Councilmember Bales, I knew you said it was a little chilly, I was freezing, the wind was ridiculous, I'm surprised this, the tree was able to stand, it was so cold, but it worked out really well, and it was really great to see. The last thing I wanted to mention is thank you to the mayor for his first Thursday events. You've really done a great job over the past several years with these events in not only gathering people from the new, community together, but finding educational content for us, not just a way to get together and network, but really just a different presentation each month, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
That's about it for me.
Thank you. All right, mayor's time, and I'm not going to repeat everything that's already been said, because most of those things I was present at, but not all of them. But I did have the privilege to kick off the National Day of Prayer here in Beaver Creek at the 9/11 Memorial that morning, and while it, it was a very, very well received, I wish, wish there might have been a little more attendance, but it was well done. I give Kay all the kudos she deserves, she really does. Again, thanks, I have to repeat this, thanks for the, to the people for the police levy. Again, thanks, I have to repeat this, thanks for the, to the people for the police levy. That is, that was needed more than most people really know. We would have been in dire straits without it, so thanks again for that. It's already mentioned, this is Military Appreciation Month, and so if you see somebody in uniform, give them a big wave, just say hello. One thing that I did individually, the Lieutenant Governor was here. He runs the jobs program for the most part in the state, and he was here to tour resident sciences, and quite the tour he got, and I think he was very impressed with some of the stuff that's going on in our community. I know I always have been. Women's League, I'll just add to that, they gave out four scholarships, $2,000 each. Only two of the young ladies were present, but they were four $2,000 scholarships, so that's, that's very impressive to be able to raise that kind of money every year to give out for scholarships. Arbor Day. You've heard about, a little bit about Arbor Day, and it was, staff, when I got there, gave me a little piece of paper with, of a script to describe Arbor Day, and so I sat down with the second graders and just asked them, and they knew every bullet point that I had in my script. They already knew. They had been studying it, I mean, they had, so they, maybe a dozen, maybe more of the students gave me a highlight of what they thought Arbor Day was, and it was fantastic. And yes, I did, I was, I was, the principal came up and said, "They have been practicing their handshake so that they can shake the mayor's hand." So it was, while you hear that the young second graders enjoyed it and appreciated it, and maybe even beyond that, I came out the winner. I mean, it was, I was grinning from ear to ear by the time the day was done. So I thank the second grade class for letting me shake everybody's hand. And let's see, was there anything else I wanted to bring up? Oh, I just, it's not for a lot, but you know, we talked about the U.S. Conference of Mayors last time and how it was a little pricey. The director of the OMA and myself, we reached out and they, they reduced the price by $1,000. So we saved the taxpayers a few bucks on that one, so. Now that made me feel a little bit better, and so thank you all for your support on that one. And with that, I am going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick few announcements. Beaver Creek Township celebrating 220 years, Saturday, May 13th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Township Government Center at 851 Orchard Lane. Activities include a tour of the Government Center history from the past 220 years, demonstrations from life in 1803, food trucks, scavenger hunt, and more. And the city will have a booth there, so stop by and say hello. All of the city is in the township, so we celebrate with the township. Kids, to Parks Day, this is, normally we do proclamations, but when we have something like this, we just kind of, we'll start doing through this method unless we have somebody to present it to. But this is organized by the National Park Trust. Mission of this day is to foster future outdoor enthusiasts, and I think COVID really helped with that. If there's a positive, it really did help people get back outside. It's the 13th anniversary, and it's Saturday, May 20th, and visit and enjoy one of our city parks. We have plenty to choose from, from pocket parks to Rotary Park, and hopefully one day, a big spring, springhouse park. But get outside of Kids to Parks Day on May 20th. This is my pleasure to announce this. It's finally coming to happen. It's been a long time coming. Unfortunately, not the way I wanted it to be. I'd like to have had Mr. McGrath right by my side on this. I'd rather than naming it in his honor, I would rather have him there with me cutting ribbon. But this is Dayton-Zenia, it runs Dayton-Zenia to Fairfield Road. Council had passed a resolution naming this road on behalf of Mr. Jeff McGrath, so we call it McGrath Way. So we're going to have the ribbon cutting. The family will be there as well. Mr. McGrath was our planning director for many years, and I remember sitting in meetings with him, talking to other developers about doing this road and what day that would be when we got this connector built, so it's actually happening. Members of the community are welcome to come. Again, this is Monday, May 22nd. We're doing it at 3:00 p.m., so that his children will be able to attend from school be close, but they'll, they'll be able to make it as well. So that will be a good day of memory as well, and job well done, Mr. McGrath. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. At this point, this is the time that we might like Thank you. At this point, we will invite anyone from the public to come up and address council if they wish on any issue at all. So is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council? Might there be one out there in uniform that might like to address council and tell us what badge he's working on tonight? Please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Jacob Redenbaugh, and I am working on my City Council merit badge, and that's why I'm here today.
Fantastic. Nice to have you. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Not right now? All right, well, if you do in the next few minutes after we're finished, we'll be more than happy to talk to you about city council. So thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks for
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to address council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I approve your adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.